So how many minutes time? Turn it over and then Christine's going to say. And then turn it over to Christine and then I'll kind of go. So she knows.
Make sure your phone's on silent mode. I'm gonna put your phone on silent if you didn't already.
Pardon me?
You got the worst line.
Yeah, you want to do that?
Opportunity.
Pardon?
I didn't say.
When you say, if you, when you introduce.
And you can plug in your computer if you want to the same power strip.
Yeah, no.
And start with each other.
Are you, yeah, you can leave the audio open for a moment on the return.
Oh my God. What happened? The pen.
Swollen.
No changes. Okay, good evening, everybody. Get my glasses on over here. All right. So, board members, I have the motion, please, to begin facilitation of our public session portion of our meeting tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any laser abstentions? At this time, I will read our COVID-19 Board of Education Protocol Statement. So, due to the ongoing pandemic, the Montgomery Township Board of Education expects that in-person attendees to this meeting adhered to the following: are not exhibiting any COVID-compatible symptoms or face programs pursuant to the New Jersey EO 251 indoor standards, sit in a socially distant manner with members of different households, and maintain social distancing when waiting in line to make public comment. Okay, we're very appreciative of your cooperation with these safety protocols, knowing that this statement will read very differently at our March 2022 meeting. So, at this time, Board Superintendent, shower with the vote, please.
Ms. Burge? Mr. Carlson? Ms. Frankenburner?
Present.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Speck?
Present.
Ms. Spina?
Present.
Mr. Tawari?
Here.
Mr. Todd?
Present.
Dr. Spence Wallace?
Presenting.
You have the floor.
So, everyone, please rise to the platform.
With the allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So, on behalf of all the board members here, we'd like to welcome you to our 2222, February 22nd, 2022 business meeting. So, Superintendent McLaughlin, welcome back. We missed you last month. Although Damian did an outstanding job filling in for you, yes.
Thank you.
So, please proceed with your superintendent's report for tonight.
Good evening, everyone. In coordination with the Board of Ed, the local health department, our district administrators, our teachers, and our other stakeholders, we announced on Thursday that the district, as of March 7, mask-wearing will be optional in schools and on school grounds, with the exception of transportation, which falls under federal mandates that still requires, as of today, mask-wearing. We encourage all to be respectful of others as people have their own choices, and some will be happy to have no mask, and others will have no change, and they'll continue to wear their masks. I'm going to tell you about some exciting things going on in the schools. So, this month is Black History Month, and just to name a few of the activities that are going on at Orchard and Village. The DEI, the Diversity, Inclusion, Equity, and Inclusion Teams, launched school-wide projects. Teachers and classes picked a figure, important person in Black history to learn more about. They did research, read about the person, and at Orchard, they put the information and facts on hexagon tiles, and at Village, they made slides. At Orchard, the hexagon tiles were put together to create a quilt that can be visible. You can go by Orchard Hill, it's in the main lobby, by the main office. And at Village, they are putting together posters to create a timeline that will soon be on display at Village. Also at Village, the staff created display cases of Black leaders and history makers, as well as incredible people, young people making a difference in their community. And that's also visible, both of them, in the foyer of Village. The morning news this month have highlighted great moments of Black history and students' shared biographies throughout the month. At Lower Middle School, they hosted an in-person viewing of "We Are the Dream", the kids of the Oakland MLK Oratora Club Fest, an inspiring documentary about students preparing for the festival, inspired by the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. LMS is also hosting, the second one is this week, a virtual book club for parents and students. On the book, "The Steamed Chasers", about students who took a scavenger hunt throughout their town, finding the contributions of Black Americans had to their everyday lives. In other news, UMS is happy to announce the return of its spring musical this Friday. Take a ride back in time to the 80s as they present the show. The students have been working hard to bring the musical back in a big way. Opening night is Friday with two additional shows on Saturday. You can buy your tickets online, on the UMS website, or in person. So, please enjoy. And hot off the press, Montgomery High School has two basketball players, one from the girls' team and one from the boys, that have been invited to compete in the New Jersey North-South Senior All-Star Game. This is an extremely prestigious and very rare honor. Both athletes will be playing in a game which will be held at Rider University on March 19. The players are Ryan Curry, committed to playing Division I basketball at West Point University, and Catherine, want to fuck her? And Catherine K. Donahue, committed to playing Division I basketball for Lafayette University. Also here tonight, our high school principal, Mrs. Heather Pino Viti, who's here to introduce our new high school vice principal candidate, Ms. Raquel Rivera.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. It's great to see you.
Great to see you all. Good evening, Board President Spence Wallace, Superintendent McLaughlin, and the rest of our esteemed board and administrators. It is a great honor to be here tonight for something that is so important and so amazing as I introduce you to our next vice principal of Montgomery High School, Ms. Raquel Rivera. During her 26 years as a high school Spanish teacher, she taught at McCorriston Catholic in Hamilton, Trenton Central High School in Trenton, a home that is once mine as well, Hopewell Valley Central High School in Pennington. She spent two and a half years as a vice principal at Timberlane Middle School in Pennington. She founded the Spanish exchange program between Hopewell Valley Central High School and a high school in, I'm going to brutalize the pronunciation. You going to help me?
Merci.
Merci. She already takes pity on it. She has developed and implemented the world language curriculum for grades 6 through 12. She's coordinated the Hopewell Valley mentoring program to help build capacity among staff. She was a district coordinator for blended and personalized learning, a school testing coordinator for Start Strong and NJSLA, and has served as a liaison for our ELL students and our families, something that we are looking forward to her filling as well. Raquel was amazing during her three different journeys through our interview process. But I must let you know that beyond the fact that she was able to answer every question impeccably, she dazzled our staff with her personality, but it was the authentic and meaningful relationships that she was able to build within our students and herself within only an hour and 15 minutes that stood out to every member of our hiring committee. And that has set her above everyone else. When we looked a little further into who she was as a human being, I don't think I've ever heard as many glowing accolades as were given about Raquel by her colleagues and those who are in a position above her. It is a great, great honor and with great pride that I will present her to you tonight, be voted on as our next vice principal. I believe that she will round out our team, and she will bring some great insight to us as well from her varied positions throughout her career. And I'll give you Raquel.
Good evening, everybody. This is Moment is Occasion on 2222. I share this moment with my husband and my daughter, who are present. Members of the board, superintendent, who I had the pleasure of meeting throughout those, it seemed like a month, I think, of speaking to you. I have to say, I stand before you as a first-generation Latina, native speaker of Spanish, parents from Puerto Rico, daughter, sister, aunt, wife, mother of two, whose son was taking an exam at this point. Humbled and honored to have been selected to serve as vice principal of Montgomery High School. And it was three rounds of rigor. And it also is a testament of how privileged I am to have been selected and be presented to you as a candidate for this position. And out of all three rounds, I have to say that the student round was the most compelling for me. Think when one of the students asked me, "What is it that is unique about you that would be different than all other candidates?" Is the fact that I am proud to be that first generation, to have learned English as a second language, to have been told no many times and stand before you now as a potential vice principal. For me, it is humbling and a privilege. I look forward to this journey, to ensure that every student has the opportunity, resources, and the space to be their true selves and pursue their passions, wherever that may be. So, I thank you very much for this opportunity and to be here before you as vice principal. Thank you.
We also have our Director of Safety and Security, Mr. Tom Wayne. I'm going to be nervous, but someone's walking the other way. He is here to introduce our COVID Coordinator Candidate, Ms. Karen Callahan.
Thank you very much. I was looking at the agenda, and I saw a wave at the end, like, oh, I'm rolling up. This is great. So, thank you. Good evening to everybody. It's an absolute pleasure for me to stand before you to recommend this wonderful candidate for this COVID position, the COVID Coordinator position. So, her name is Karen Callahan. She's been, I just had to join us this evening. She comes through us from Cranberry, New Jersey. She holds a bachelor's degree from Montclair State in business with a concentration on marketing and management. From 2012 to 2021, she served as a board member in Cranberry. So, she did 10 years on the board, including a stint as the president and vice president. She also did five years on the Township Planning Board in Cranberry. We interviewed several candidates, and Kristin Taylor and I were given the responsibility of selecting a candidate to move forward to interview with Mary, and we had some really, really quality candidates. And we interviewed five or six of them, but Karen's interview just clearly brought her to the top. It was very evident to us that she spoke COVID. And by that, immediately, just the terms she was using while we spoke to her, I was like, how does she know this? You know, how does she, how is she so familiar with these terms that we've been hearing and dealing with for the last two years? Well, it turns out that over there in Cranberry, while she was on the Board of Education, when COVID hit, they don't have the resources necessarily that we do here. And she pretty much volunteered herself to become their coordinator, right? It's a K-3 district, again, not the resources we have. So, she basically did that COVID coordinator job for Cranberry during the darkest times of COVID for nothing, right? So, when she was saying all these things, that explained how she knew exactly all the terminology we've been using for the last two years. So, she's very qualified, very personable, and we're really excited to have her come on board. So, Karen, what, you want to say hello?
Hi, everybody. I'm Karen Callahan. Very nice to meet all of you. You know, when I saw this position posted, one of the first things that came to my mind was, wow, there's a Board of Education that really realizes the burden that COVID has put on your administrators and nurses over the past two years. You know, you were all hit by surprise when COVID hit, and this became the work of the administrators and the nurses over and above what they already do. And I thought, this was perfect for me because if I could help take some of that burden off their plates and allow them to refocus that on the students of the district, that's what I wanted to do. So, I'm really excited to be here, and I look forward to meeting all of you again sometime soon. So, thank you.
Thank you. And now for our school presentation. I would like to introduce part of the LMS SLT, well, Lower Middle School, right? School Leadership Team, represented by Ms. Lisa Romano, Jennifer Belmont, Kristin Kaplan, and Mr. Mike Richards is here as well. Welcome.
Good evening, and thank you to our board and our central administration for giving LMS the opportunity to share with you information about the brand-new club that we have at LMS called Empowering Young Monty. Without the leadership of our very own 6th grade LA Social Studies teacher, Kristin Kaplan, and without support and cooperation of so many throughout our Montgomery community, we wouldn't have been able to get our club up and running. So, without further ado, Kristin Kaplan will take you on a virtual tour of our very own Empowering Young Monty.
Good evening. I asked my students recently, "Do you think children have the power to make real change?" The majority of them said yes, and even referenced famous teen activists like Greta Thunberg and Marley Dias. What I found interesting was that when I asked them if they, the ones sitting in the room right now, could make a change, they weren't so sure. So, I pushed, asking, "Why?" "Because everyone thinks we're too young," one of them said. Another yelled out, "No one will listen to us." I looked at them and nodded. I understood what they were feeling. Let's face it, when we think of kids, we don't always think about how much they already know, what they face on a daily basis, and what they are truly capable of outside of the world of academia. However, that's where I think people sometimes get it wrong. Our students are capable of enacting change. They just need the right guidance. Last June, Lisa Romano approached me about an idea that students at the high school had for our club at LMS. Our Montgomery students were inspired to empower their younger peers. They wanted to help raise their voices and create a greater sense of community, helping them understand and embrace diversity. With those goals in mind, Empowering Young Monty was born. Through collaboration with past and present Montgomery students like Matthew Heinel, Grace Johnson, and Amin Agani, as well as fellow community member Dominique Young, who co-owns the Coder School right around the corner, we worked to develop a program that would teach our LMS students about equity, social justice, and community, while simultaneously empowering them to make change. We had a vision for this club and hopes that bringing this club to life at LMS would create a better, brighter, and more equitable future for our students. A few of them were able to share a few words about their vision. Hopefully, the video will pop up eventually. Maybe. There it goes. Nope. Maybe you could pass by after that.
Thank you, technology.
Hi, Montgomery. My name is Dominique Young, co-owner of the Coder School Montgomery. And I'm really excited to talk about why I wanted to participate in the Empowering Young Monty Club. I work with a lot of the students in the community, and I see how creative and how brilliant they are. And I see how they're not looking at, you know, ethnicity or gender as a barrier. They look at it as an opportunity. And so, any type of programming, or enrichment, or conversation we can spark within our community to make sure that every single child feels included and every single child has the confidence to leverage their voice to push for change and peace and productivity. I'm always going to advocate for that.
Hello, I'm Matt. For me, Empowering Young Monty is an opportunity for a level of sustainable activism in our community to develop. One of the biggest goals for Empowering Young Monty is to expose students at an early age with, to having those problem-solving abilities, for standing up for themselves and for others, building the community overall, and making it a better place for everyone.
Hi, my name is Grace Johnson, and my vision for Empowering Young Monty was making a place where students start to understand earlier on that diversity is a good thing, and where they can start to understand and appreciate diversity so that way it's not as difficult early or later on because I think the earlier that kids start to understand this, the easier it will be to have these values throughout their life and not make us learn that they have to reteach themselves. And also, a place where they can start to figure out how to organize and stand up for the causes that they believe in.
At Empowering Young Monty's first meeting in September, I felt inspired by what I saw and heard. The students were ready to make changes and explore how to make our LMS community, our Montgomery community, a better and safer place for all people. Many students already had ideas about clubs they wanted to implement and programs they wanted to see brought to the lower middle school. They were all so passionate. In speaking with the students, I was impressed by what they felt the club embodied. Maybe you want to do a little? Nope. I need your help again.
Empowering Young Monty is a place where I confide people like me who share interests, and also a place where I can put my plans in action. Empowering Young Monty needs to be about helping our community grow and being one together, and also making sure everybody feels included and safe. Hi, my name's Armae. And to me, Empowering Monty is a way to express how I feel about what should be going on in the school and make changes and differences.
Our students were ready to make these dreams of a better future come true. However, without help, they would still run into that original roadblock, being too young to take action. Fortunately, Empowering Young Monty was created for just this reason, and our Montgomery community readily stepped up to the plate to guide our students. In reaching out to members from the high schools Monty for Justice, our Equity Director Stacy Young, 5'8" LA and Social Studies Supervisor Jacy Johnson, as well as others, we were able to teach our young students what it takes to make change. Our community banded together to teach our students about concepts like equity, diversity, what a safe community looks like to different people, and how to safely advocate for change, even when you are young. One of the most exciting things we were able to show our Empowering Young Monty members was what pursuing your passions and making change looks like in the real world. It's another video. I probably need your help again. Thank you. One example came from Monty for Justice member Grace Johnson, who sent an Empowering Young Monty video from her trip to Iceland. Is it not going to work? No.
Empowering Young Monty is a place where I can find people like me who should...
Well, it was a really great video from all these kids. Grace went to Iceland to pursue activism against, or for, against climate change and to help the environment. And she had a whole bunch of kids from Germany, Switzerland, France, who all just said hello. And at the very end, she was like, "We're here to make change." And that was really great for our kids to see that live and in action, to see, hey, here's a 19-year-old, 18, 19-year-old girl. She just graduated from Montgomery, and wow, pretty impressive what she's able to do. So, someday we'll watch that video, it's okay. Our students in Empowering Young Monty are ready, willing, and passionate about shaping their own futures into a better and brighter landscape. They are ready to grow as learners, discover new ways to help one another, build a stronger community, and become leaders. I am so excited to see where their journeys will continue to take them and to learn what's coming next down the road for Empowering Young Monty. Thank you.
Kristin, thank you so much. The work that you and the students have accomplished in half a year is nothing less than very impressive. And we at LMS know how much of your personal time you have volunteered, meeting with community members all throughout the summer, extending the length of the club when you saw how much excitement there was for it. And without your willingness to volunteer so much of your time and support to this initiative, Empowering Young Monty wouldn't have been able to get out of its feet. We look forward to supporting you as the club continues to grow and flourish. And on behalf of LMS, thank you for all you do to lift our student voices and to deepen their commitment to making our community a better. And we're live.
So, that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you, everyone. And thank you to our panel for coming tonight. If you wanted to leave, you can. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much for that amazing work. And, Ms. Romano, we all know how important and profound it can be when we honor people to, not just simply to validate, but just to celebrate, right? The really meaningful and important work that is facilitated with children every day, in and out of the classrooms. So, I'd like to invite any board members, if they have any comments or feedback on the presentation, and then we'll move into public. Our first public comment, I'll read the statement if not. Okay, great. So, members of the public are allowed one opportunity to bring in new business to the board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments or questions must be directed to the Board President. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. There are two times during board meetings that the public is invited to speak. One time is now. Remember, the public are invited to bring in new business to the board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Later in the meeting, there will be a second opportunity to address the board regarding the action agendas. Before you make your comment, please state your name, address, and subject matter, as well as signage within the booklet there. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students and board employees and to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages references to specific individuals. While directing comments or questions to the Board President, please understand that the public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as Q and A sessions, where rather offered is opportunities for you to share your thoughts with the board. The Board President may need to refer to an issue to the superintendent if a particular issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command with the school district before coming to the board for a response. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. However, there are times when comments or questions will require additional information gathering before a responses. before a response is provided. So board superintendent, sorry.
Public comment is open.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Misha Jernigan and I'm a 10th grader at Montgomery High School. I have a few different ideas that I would like to touch upon this evening, all of which are in concern of the student body and Montgomery community as a whole. First, I would like to discuss last month's meeting. I just wanted to talk about how if you wanted more students to actively speak, we would need to move the public speaking earlier, which we do. So I really appreciate that. I really hope that more students will be eager to come and talk if it's at a more feasible hour because we do have homework after school, extracurricular activities. So once again, I really appreciate that. Moving on, throughout the duration of the school year, I have noticed that politics has been making its way into curriculum and I personally feel that it has no place being discussed in our math, science and history courses. I've noted that several adults have been very open about sharing their opinions on topics like vaccination, presidential elections, et cetera, et cetera, and then tying it into lesson plans, leaving no room for students to object or understand what is really going on. In many instances, I feel teachers fail to realize the true impact they have on students or they can have on students. And when they voice their opinions so casually, I feel it's a little bit inappropriate in a professional setting. For example, my younger sister came home upset because immigrants were being categorized as weak and dependent, which is what she was learning about in school. And we are both proud first generation Americans who grew up in an immigrant household. On another note, openly discussing topics regarding unfair treatment of individuals based on their race in classrooms is causing a divide in students. I'm hoping that because I'm a kid in this environment, you will listen to me and understand what I have to say and understand how it can potentially harm us as a whole, as a student body. Discussing stereotypes that negatively categorize a race is causing kids to think one way about an individual before getting a chance to meet them. Personally, I have always picked my friends based on their character, never their appearance. And incorporating these ideas is causing certain students to make different decisions. With this information, I hope you consider reevaluating what is being said in classrooms because it really has a true impact on us and our perception of the world. And we are growing up in a very different world. So just a fact. Lastly, I want to thank you for all removing the, for, thank you all for moving the mask effective March 7. I'm so happy that people are realizing the pandemic must come to a close and we must resume to our normal lives. Thank you for your time.
All right. So that looks as if we've concluded with the first portion of our public comment. Thank you so much. We will move on. It's at this time where we will commence with representative reports followed by committee reports. Our student representatives are absent this evening. So Jim Dolan or representative from MTEA will deliver their report at this time.
Good evening, board members, administrators, colleagues and community members and everyone watching virtually as well. Jim Dolan, president of the Montgomery Township Education Association. A big thank you to our LMS share out tonight, what they were doing with their, just school wide in general, but also with their, their club. So a special thank you to Jen Belmont and Kristin Kaplan. We had our fourth virtual book club session just a few days ago. The book is titled Teachers' Union and Social Justice. And we kind of focused on reimagining our union and how to build power within our union. So we discussed things about how to engage the community and also use our social media and use the, look, take a closer look at the structures we have in our own association to see how we can improve as well. We had some really great discussions. It was a smaller group. It actually blended to the amazing discussions that we did have. And we looked forward to seeing how we're going to apply these things, you know, within our association and how that works to support our greater community as well. The MTA's LBGTQ+ affinity group had its final third planning meeting. And now we're just about ready to launch with this group here within our own association. So that's a real exciting time. And I thank Max Rodriguez, our equity chair, for taking that off the ground. On Thursday night this week, the MTA brings you a workshop titled Cycle of Prejudice. And I actually have some handouts here and put some on the side table if anyone is interested. So it's this Thursday. And I also advertise it on our Facebook page and Instagram page. So if you're not following us or shy and don't want to follow us, just give us a little click, give us a little like and check it out. You can actually browse it as well without being a member, I believe, or without, you know, officially giving us a thumbs up. It's okay. So participants will explore their own experience with prejudice and the impact it had on their own lives. It's presented by the Garden State Equity Club, I guess, and starts at 7:00 PM. It's via Zoom. Okay, so all you have to do is sign up. There's a link and then you can be a member of Zoom and check it out. So it's open to students of grade seven up, parents, community members and all staff members as well. So all are welcome. I was, moving on to some of our pride events and talking about community engagement. I had the pleasure, or maybe displeasure, of dropping off all of the food collection that we collected within our community. I say displeasure because it was seven shopping carts worth. So it was quite a bit. So we donated that to Montgomery Food Pantry along with a $2,000 check as well. And it was certainly very appreciative because, you know, COVID is putting together some challenging times for all unlike we've never seen before. And our food pantry certainly needs support from us and other people as well. Also, Monday kicks off Read Across America. So Read Across America is a huge event at our elementary level especially, but also at the other levels. And some of you might remember last year, we kind of do a little repeat of this. It was successful. We're giving out pizzas. So right in the back of our own media center right here, we'll be giving out some pizzas on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday. There's a signup. Once again, point you to our social media platform. So you can check that out. The reason why we do a signup is to make sure we have enough pizzas for anyone, everyone, so we don't have anyone disappointed. And it's just a drive around event. And we give you a pizza. And you can spend that quality time with your family. You don't have to worry about dinner and read a book together as a family. That's what it's all about. So that's really exciting. Let's see. A little DLT event. I know we had, we were blessed to have our president, Zelda Spencer Walms, and Cookie Franco-Herman there at our DLT just last Wednesday. We talked about every, many different topics from masking to universal design for learning and also school start times, checking in. How is that going? We made some little tweaks to it and then see where we're going to go in the future. So that's where we like to talk about these big topics and big ideas. So everyone at the district level is informed. And last, before I leave, just want to do a little member highlight, which I enjoy doing. The member I'd like to highlight tonight is Erwin Lopez. Erwin Lopez was the final selection candidate for the head custodian position at the lower middle school. Anyone who knows Erwin knows he's the perfect person for the job. He has tremendous work ethic, has strong leadership skills and he's a deep thinker who always tries to make things better. He has, he's the perfect person as we transition from using our subcontracted company to having all Montgomery staff at the lower middle school. He builds relationships and will be dedicated to making this transition a success for all. So we see, if you see him around, you know our lower middle school is in wonderful hands. And as we start to transition further, it'll just be a wonderful transition thanks to Erwin. So thanks to him and don't forget, get a flyer, grab a pizza or even, we were thankful last year to have some of our board members help out deliver some pizzas too. So even if you want to stop by and say hello or deliver a few pizzas, it's really nice. It's an event that I enjoy giving out in addition to some of the other ones as well just because during COVID, it's nice to put smile on faces and that's what we do. Good night, everyone.
So next, do any board members have any delegate or representative reports there? I was going to say, is there any others? Thank you, board members back.
So I've got two reports to make. The first has to do with the PTA's, PTSA's, PTO. And I substituted for Cookie to attend the middle school PTO on February the 8th and the elementary school PTA meeting on the February 9th. I provided some updates from the board perspective, but the thing I liked most about it was it gave me an opportunity to hear what's going on in the schools, which is helpful since I don't, my kids graduated and I'm not as in touch with things. So it was great to see some of the things that were going on. I'll just highlight a few of them. The upper middle school had a self-care day at the end of the marking period that went very well. It was an opportunity for students to kind of let down a little bit and it was appreciated by all and was supported by the PTO. Also, there are sessions being held for sixth grade students that are transitioning up to the middle school and to the upper middle school and eighth grade students that are moving up to the high school. And so part of it is they get course selections, understand what's happening in a different building. And so those activities are going on. The other thing that all, that both of the meetings talked about, the principals that were there, is that things are coming back to normal in some ways. So we heard about the play coming up. Both of the schools, that both of the middle schools have plays. The upper middle school Camp Mason trip is back on for March, which is a real positive. And they're starting to look at how outside programs coming in. For example, the Princeton Symphony is planned in the next couple of months to come in. So that was a couple of things from the parent teacher organizations. I also wanted to mention about the Educational Services Commission. On February 2nd, I attended the public board meeting of the Somerset County Educational Service Commission, sometimes referred to as the SCESC. So if you see that, you know, that's what it stands for. Educational Service Commissions were established to provide shared services and typically, although not exclusively at a county level. So we're, we participate, as you'll see in tonight's agenda, in items 3.8 through 3.14. We're using the Somerset County ESC for some services, particularly around non-public students that are non-public and having, there's funding that comes from the state and from federal government that flows through our district and we're using the ESC to help us with those programs. So the, the nice thing is, is that the ESC can provide some specialized services for multiple districts. And so that allows them to kind of concentrate on a set of those things and allows our administrators and business office to focus on our district more closely. And another thing that I learned that I wasn't quite as aware of is that the ESC, although it's a school district that actually operates more like a business, they don't receive state aid, unlike Montgomery or some of you yet. But that, their funding comes from the services that we or in other school districts make use of their programs. And so that's, sometimes provides some challenges for them. So I was sworn in as the representative. Maria is our alternate. And after recognition of some staff, there were three presentations. I thought I'd highlight, one of them was a video that they are developing to kind of almost market their services to school districts. So it had a walking tour around some of their programs. One of the things that I found interesting was for special needs students, they actually have a mini shop right that students can use to stock the shelves or to do checkouts or various other grocery related services. So that was an interesting approach that they're taking. They presented their proposed budget for approval. And as I said, the challenges they have trying to operate as a business, if they're looking at next year's budget and yet they don't know what services are going to be used, it's not like in our district where we have an idea where enrollments are. So it's a little bit more of a challenge. But the budget was approved to be submitted to the executive county superintendent. And so those are my comments. Any questions?
I was just going to tweak a little bit. Camp Mason was moved to April.
Oh, thank you. Other comments?
No, thank you. Any other board delegate reports? Otherwise, we'll move to committee reports at this time. Thank you, board members back for that. As the chair of ACI Committee, I will read the report. And as usual, I will inform all of you that I share that responsibility with our assistant superintendent, Damian Papa. The ACI Committee met, or ACI met, on Wednesday, February 9. So with the absence of the Director of Equity, Data and Accountability, Stacy Young, Mr. Papa reported that the district equity leadership team met the first week of February. The meeting content included community agreements, goals of the committee purpose, as well as next steps. And interestingly, there was a brief mention of a New Jersey bill, S598, which would ban teaching critical race theory in public schools. The NJPSA, New Jersey Principals and Supervisors Association, released a statement saying it will not utilize its influence to fight this bill as it appears it has little to no chance of approval. And when I engage with my comments, the banter is more about the new CRT, right? Culturally responsive teaching, not critical race theory. And for those who are interested, parents may find Ms. Young's Start Strong outcomes presentation on our district website. So then on February 11th, parents of students elected to participate in the district's gifted and talented program will mail notification letters. The GNT students will begin to meet with their media specialists beginning next week. One of the eligibility provisions, the COGAT results, are available in the Genesis Parent Corte. Our GNT program utilizes the pullout modality for the lower grade students and it will focus on their interests. And eventually, parent feedback will be obtained to support the program structure. A GNT informative webpage is forthcoming as well. And due to the acutely low minority and special services student representation, the board has asked the district to more closely examine the GNT student selection process. Now, the author of The Fifty Seven Plus, Dashka Slater, will conduct a virtual book talk to students sometime in March. The Fifty Seven Plus is a compelling story that links the diversity of creed, right? And the impact of impulsivity to themes around tolerance and forgiveness. So a big shout out to the board for voting yes for this meaningful opportunity for our students. It's very exciting. So next, the counseling director, Cori Gaylord, reported that the scholarship applications are open to all seniors now with a due date in mid-March. The annual end of year scholarship awards ceremony will take place in June. Several SEL workshops have been conducted and a few are reported. For more information, we encourage you to visit the counseling department's webpage. And the counseling department's Community Presentation Portrait of a Graduate will launch next month. We're excited about this. So during a separate ACI executive session meeting[1742.33] So during a separate ACI executive session meeting, a few days after our ACI meeting, we edited the student-parents survey, and the results will be included in the March presentation. Is that correct, Ms. Papa? Then the Special Services Department announced that ESY, the Extended School Year Summer Program, will be held at Orchard Hill this summer. This choice will allow for maximum program capacity with limited movement of furniture. They'll be able to utilize classrooms with restrooms, access to the playground, as well as specialized services, private room space. And finally, the highlight, or at least it was the highlight for me at the meeting, was the presentation conducted by a really talented K-4 ELA and social studies supervisor, Amy Monaco. And her presentation was on the Interactive Literacy webpage. So Ms. Monaco reminded us that there are many belief systems about early literacy curriculum, and interpretations are varied. It turns out that reading is a much more complex activity than earlier or originally purported. Respected researchers Duke and Cartwright identified four elements of early literacy that include, one, motivation and engagement; two, word recognition, alphabetic principles; three, language comprehension; and four, bridging those processes, connecting words in reading, fluency, vocabulary, and the like. It's important to note that we are continually looking for ways to improve upon our early literacy program because our children deserve the best, most stratified teachings to meet their diverse needs. So we are, I know I am so excited for the community to visit their early literacy website as Ms. Monaco did a really fantastic job utilizing best practices as well as research to create a beautiful representation of how we teach young learners how to read and write. And I would also like to give a really special shout out to our student best book earlier during the public comment. I was so moved, you know, by what appears to be this, you know, developed sense of discernment, you know, about the power of empathy and recognizing every single human being, every single one of your peers in a way by which they present, and no other characteristic by which they don't have any control. So we thank you for sharing that acknowledgement, and I'm sure your parents are really proud of your achievements so far. So now we will hear from, or Maria of Anti-Racism and Reform Subcommittee Report.
So this month, we had our first ever parents workshop that was put out to the community. We had the Racial Equity Initiative led by Dr. Sandra Devenay, and she had three speakers from Montgomery community who shared their stories. And it was a workshop that allowed for about 34 participants from our parent community to come and join us, and it was a great, great experience for everybody who was involved. And our student committee members are still planning on having a grave space, which is an initiative where they would like to open up a conversation for Anti-Racism and Reform Committee Talk in the high school. So we are looking for a date where that can, that can be a good, have a good turnout as well. And we will be continuing this work hopefully and doing more of these community outreach and parent, parent talk. So, I think that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you, Board Member Spina. So now, Board Member Tumari, the Chair of Operations, Facilities and Finance Committee report.
Our fourth committee met on February 11th, and it was joined by our friends at MTEA along with other committee members. The topic of the conversation is generally around the fiscal year 23 budget planning. And as I updated last time around, we have some bumps in the budget, mostly driven by fiscal year 2022 healthcare claims experience, which has resulted in giving a spike to our self-insurance costs. So we are seeing an increase in healthcare for our budget. Secondly, as they say, no good tweet goes unfinished. So our administrative team does a good job of managing this special ed, which has created high degree of interest for special ed families to move in Montgomery. And with our enrollment in the special ed going up, we need to staff up around 17 more professionals to meet the demand. So that's going to be additional spike in the budget for fiscal year 23. Our team has done a pretty good job of looking at all the numbers. They're trying to keep it within 2% tax really we have. But we will have to make some choices where the funds need to be moved around from capital reserves, from maintenance reserve, so that we continue to operate as a strong budget, and we have done in the past. Committees spend a lot of time looking at all options. Of course, managing a good fund balance, which we have done over years, is going to be our prime focus. That has significant impact on our bond rating, on the sustainability of the budget from operations point of view. So we'll continue to do that. In coming months, we will be doing a public hearing in March and then adopting budget in April, and it goes through that process. So those are quick highlights and updates from the last fourth committee meeting. I'll invite other committee members to chime in and share if I missed out anything. Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Tumari. So now we'll move to Board Member Speck, our PCC Policy and Communications Committee report.
Okay, back. So the Policy Committee met on February 10th and discussed some policies that are up for first reading tonight under Agenda Item 1.2. One of the mandated policies has to do with federal OSHA regulations. So it's not a state thing that, because there are changes that are happening at the state level as far as COVID restrictions, this will still apply, but it actually dealt with COVID in healthcare settings, which in our case is the nurses' offices. But as we know, there, we've already adopted, in the past, we've adopted COVID-related policies and will be continuing to review those and either amend them as necessary or abolish them if that's appropriate. So we'll likely have further updates about that as federal and state level changes are made. There are two non-nedated policies tonight that reflect changes we've made for board officers, and we're continuing to look at those. There's also a change in policy regarding streaming of our meetings. And we also have our bylaw for board officers up for adoption tonight under Agenda Item 1.3. So if any of the board members have any comments on the policies that are up for first reading, please let us know. And the committee also, during that meeting, met with Jim Ryan, who's providing some consulting services on communications for the district regarding methods and strategies. And so we had a pretty open discussion. Cookie can fill in some other things if she wants. But we're talking about kind of a couple of areas that I wanted to highlight are how to set up community notifications and other communications when situations arise. If something is happening in the district that's an emergent situation, you know, trying to, you want to communicate it, but you know, you're trying to deal with the situation as well, so it's trying to come up with, proactively come up with some templates and ways of handling those situations. But we also talked with him about the review that they're doing of best practices for areas like our website and other communications. So we will continue to report out those things. And one of the things that we've also talked about is there's a planned meeting with the administration to talk about communications, and we may want to think about having that at one of our board meetings or our board retreat. And so we can talk further about that. Cookie, do you have anything else?
No. The other thing I think I would add would be, you know, the district is trying to identify particular individuals who would be helping with the communications that we need to the school, so that, you know, it's not just only one person, it's always the superintendent, but you know, you have different point persons in the different schools, and they'll learn skills and techniques on how to, you know, quickly respond to events happening in the school and setting up that type of communication.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks. Yeah, because part of the issue is you want to have consistent communication if something is coming out and you have students in two different buildings and they're reporting out in different ways, that can be confusing and misinformation can be, you know, gathered. So that's another aspect of it. So thanks for raising that up. That's my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Speck, for that. Now we'll hear from our first Vice President, Franco Herman, with our Human Resources Committee report.
Thank you, Ms. President. HRC met on February 8th. We discussed the board calendar and target dates for the year, and then further discussed the process that Ms. Rivera had underwent as she was interviewing for the VP position. One thing that she had mentioned that I thought was relevant was the student component in the interview process. This is the second time we've done that. We've done it with the principal process. And at the HRC meeting, I made the recommendation to the superintendent that that component, if possible, be added when we have interviews for positions in the administrative level. I think it's important for those candidates to see our students, to see if they can build relationships and what kind of rapport they can have. I think that's a really great addition to the process of interviewing. At the end of, another thing that we discussed, so at the end of last year, the board increased the substitute pay for teachers. So our request was put forth to the committee to review substitute pay for paraprofessionals. And as a matter of due diligence for this year, the committee will review substitute pay across the board to make sure that the district is competitive and fair. So that is my report. Good on the President.
Thank you so much. So now the President's report. That's me again. All right. So while we are just shy of two months with our new board makeup, we've already established a few new systems met with positive feedback. So there's an internal newsletter, a customized memorandum utilized for certain board announcements, the development of a board calendar to help us stay on top of key actions. Planning is underway for our first board retreat, community listening sessions, and we've created two ad hoc committees. So for explanation purposes only, the board's standing committees, also called our board committees, are those committees that we engage on a continual basis, right, monthly. They are set forth in our bylaws. The ad hoc committees are formed for a limited period of time to address a specific need. So when the work of the ad hoc committee is completed, the committee is dissolved, right? So an ad hoc committee may exist for less than a year or more than a year, depending on the extent of the work to which it's assigned. All right? Next, in response to board members' serious concerns with our current food services program and community complaints, First Vice President Franco Herman chairs the Food Services Ad Hoc Committee. So along with Superintendent McLaughlin, she and Board Secretary Shower have identified a group of folks from various stakeholder groups to participate. An introductory meeting, which has been held, and two food service walkthroughs have taken place. One in the Plainfield Public School District in Union County and the other right next door, the Hopewell Valley Public School District. Subsequent visits include the Hillsborough, Princeton, and our own Montgomery Township. Same day, debrief meetings are conducted where committee members share their observations. Okay? The goal here is to not only observe food programs, best practices in other districts, but also to discern indicator areas should we decide to post for an RFP, Request for Proposal, in the spring in search of a new food service contract. And then finally, I actually chair the Special Services Ad Hoc Committee, and we will participate in our first meeting on Thursday, March 3rd. The board is looking forward to meeting with the parents and being resolution-focused with various subject areas. So thank you all to the parents for their enthusiasm, their willingness to dig in and get the work done. And then the board and the MTEA negotiations teams are continuing to meet to reach a settlement agreement. The meetings are very productive and positive. The IBB, Interest-Based Bargaining Process, is working very well for both sides. We categorize topic areas as monetary and non-monetary, and I believe our next meeting is Thursday, February 24th at around 4:30. All right. So that will complete our committee reports at this time. Next, what we have here. Okay. A rule of the minutes. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes from last month's board meeting? First, January 25th, executive session meeting, and then the business meeting minutes.
Still moving.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Any needs or extensions? Great. I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence to the board. Believe it or not, there were only two. There were only two! Let's hope that's indicative of something positive and great moving forward. All right. So now it's that time of our meeting where it is the, we invite the public for the second public comment. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda for up to a maximum of three minutes during this period of the meeting. All comments or questions must be directed to the board president. The board president may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the particular issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command within the school district before coming to the board for response. All responses will be provided, may be provided, at the end of this session. Board Secretary Shower, you may commence with that.
Christopher Wilson, Carriage Trail, regarding the incoming Curriculum and Instruction Committee, as well as the personnel agenda. That's not public. I'd like to ask if the board would consider making the personnel agenda public wherever it's appropriate to do so and not running afoul of any other privacy or other issues. But for the incoming Curriculum and Instruction Committee, as our Madam President stated, district leadership recently posted a K-4 literacy website, articulating our district's vision based on a responsive teaching model toward the goal of increasing student independence, excuse me, agency enjoys surrounding literacy. However, upon review, this website raises multiple red flags that our curriculum committee and our board must review and act upon. I'd like to focus on the reference page, specifically an article in the middle of the references cited by Johnston and Scanlon entitled "An Examination of Dyslexia Research and Instruction With Policy Implications." This article is deeply troubling. It questions the very existence of dyslexia. On page 12, the authors write, quote, "Doubtless all parties involved have children's best interests at heart. However, decisions are often made based on misrepresentations of the state of research promoted by media, commercial interests, and lobbying groups. Neither the nature nor the existence of dyslexia is settled science," end quote. "For the last year, I have raised questions about our literacy practices mainly due to the personal experience of my family and our dyslexic child. That our district's literacy and curriculum leadership would identify this article as one of the, quote, 'best research-based practices,' end quote, as it states on the website, raises serious questions. I'd like to give our curriculum director and literacy supervisor the benefit of the doubt because I too believe that all parties involved have children's best interests at heart. But it is inappropriate and inexcusable to promote research which denies the existence of dyslexia. Dyslexia is identified in federal law in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act under specific learning disabilities. Dyslexia is identified in our state laws, which also identify both..." Dyslexia is identified in our state laws, which also identify both the expectations for finding students with dyslexia as well as providing these students with evidence-based instruction, intervention, and instruction. I urge all of you to read the article in question and ask yourself if this is representative of our district's expectation of equity for all of our students, including those with dyslexia. From my perspective, it is not okay ever to deny the existence and humanity of a person's identity or call it into question because you don't believe it exists or because you do not believe it is useful, as the authors write in their paper, to recognize their identity. And I think this is especially self-evident when that person is a protected class under federal and state law. The dyslexia denial in our district's research base used to inform our curriculum and practices as associated on the website border on bigotry and should be condemned. Our dyslexic children deserve better. Literacy is a human right, and so is identity. It is clear to me that a powerful negative stigma surrounding dyslexia still exists in our community. Rather than tearing these students down or questioning the motives of their allies, we need to be acknowledging their learning disabilities and providing them with the right tools to reach their fullest potential in all settings, including general education. To that end, our curriculum committee needs to take the following steps to protect our dyslexic students. One, establish policy reaffirming our state laws which recognize the IDA definition, that is International Dyslexia Association, definition of dyslexia, the need for screening and evidence-based intervention. Two, ask our district leaders if they believe dyslexia is real. And finally, continue to have a conversation about good first instruction and how we are rebalancing as the author of our units of study curriculum, so stated, balanced literacy needs rebalancing. How are we doing that to better meet the needs of our students? The, you know, the research that was posted, again, you know, I'm hopeful that maybe it was, you know, kind of thrown up there and maybe it wasn't fully read. I did read it. I think it's deeply troubling, and I think it calls into question the judgment and the direction of our literacy practices and curriculum in our district. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, the Human Resources Agenda is on the table over there. We placed it over there for you to view.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, any comments? I don't know if you want to have a comment. Okay. So, good evening, everyone. Anya, we'll like a journey again. I just have a follow-up item to the, well, first of all, thank you for being one of those school districts that decided to go with masks optional. I think it's a great start for us to get back to where we started two years ago. But I'm here to kind of ask you guys to do a little bit, going back to the communication comments, a little bit more insight on how these decisions are being made, why and what they really mean. And what I, why I'm saying this is some of the parents participated in the township meeting health department session, and, you know, we posed a lot of questions in regards to our numbers in particular and COVID and what that means. And we felt, we walked away feeling that there's still some concern in regards to COVID and what that actually might mean for us. And then if we look back at the email that was sent back to us, you know, it's, it does state at the end that it is, that there's a possibility that the district may need to reinstate a mandatory mask policy. As a parent and as a person who kind of follows the data and is very much interested in the topic, I would appreciate if the leadership would state some of those criteria. For example, when would we reinstate that? What's the breakout? What does that mean? I mean, is it guided by a number? Is it guided by infectious rates? Is it, because I think from the beginning, I've been coming here talking about ninety-seven percent vaccination rate in Montgomery, right? So if we follow all the rules of COVID, we said if we do X, Y, Z, these things are not going to happen, yet they continue happening. So my ask today, and I'm sorry I'm rambling, but is for us to be a little bit more clear in the communication, stating and supporting the facts and the data that is being utilized to make these decisions. Because sometimes we as parents are looking at what's happening in our community, and we don't understand why there's such a huge delay in the actions that the school district is making without any supporting data or evidence. So that would be my, my ask. And also, I just want to say thank you for building the committees. I think it's going to be extremely helpful, and I look forward to working with a lot of you. Thank you, Cookie, for all your support and Zelda, of course. And, you know, this is something that I feel we need to bring together, and as a community, we need to have a little bit more conversation so we understand where we need to be to move forward. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you both for your comments. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I don't know if he's still here or not. So we definitely will follow up with the article. Our personnel agendas are consistently published and available for the public. And Anya, thank you for your feedback. It is very helpful for us. You know, we continue to strive to improve and communicate, you know, specifically and clearly, you know, utilizing facts and data. So your feedback is very helpful. So at this time, germane to our action agenda items, I would like to ask for a motion to approve items one point zero to four point six.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Speck?
Yes.
Ms. Spina?
Yes.
Mr. Tawari?
Yes.
Mr. Tar?
Yes, Tawari, except for two point four, which I won't have seen.
Ms. Dr. Spence-Walls?
Yes.
All right. So that motion carries. Excellent. So as usual, it's been a delight to serve everyone this evening. I would like to thank the board members, Superintendent McLaughlin, Board Secretary Shower, for your continued diligence and commitment. Happy Black History Month this month, happy Women's History Month next month. So we will not adjourn our public session at this time. I would like to ask for a motion to reconvene an executive session, and there will be no action taken during executive session, but there will be discussion on some remaining board governance items and some confidential negotiations matters. We will report back out for a formal adjournment. You are not required to remain here for us to reconvene in public, but obviously it is your choice. So may I get that motion, please?
So move.
Call in favor? No delays, no delays, extensions. We will move to executive session.
Okay. Thank you. What is your name?
Ethan.
Ethan. Have you been here before?
I've been here once before.
You got like lovely tall, didn't you? Like, was it maybe a year ago? It was a while ago.
It was in the fall, yeah.
Okay, so you grow.
Yeah, a little bit. I'm also wearing boots.
Yeah, but still, you're tall. No need to say, okay?
All right, cool.